Good evening, residents of Litchfield. As the Chair of the Litchfield School Board, I find the due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 panemdemic. And in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in the accordance with the emergency, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone and additional access possibilities by video and electronic means. We are utilizing Google Meet for the electronic meeting. All members of Litchfield School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform. And the public has access contemporaneously, listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-877-309-2073. The password is 596521261. I'm going to repeat that. The phone number is 1-877-309-2073, and the password is 596521261. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of Litchfield School Board at Litchfield School Board Agendas. If anyone has a problem, please email Christina Harrison at c-harrison@litchfieldsd.org, or Michelle Flynn at meflynn@litchfieldschooldistrict.org. In the event public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call votes. So let's start the meeting with a roll call of attendance. Each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So Tina?
I am here, and there is no one in the room with me.
Tara?
Here, I'm Miguel.
Rob?
Here alone.
And Liz?
Here with my kitty.
And I'm here, I'm Brian, and I'm here with the Superintendent, and our IT Specialist, Jason, and Rob Fay, our Technician on Cable. So I'd like to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any revisions to the agendas even?
We do not.
Summary of non-public actions from April 15th and 29th. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of April 1, 2020, Mr. McDonald Second. The motion carried by a roll call vote, Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to accept the nomination of Allison Dean as District-Wide Speech Language Pathologist at a salary of $46,537. I did say nomination, right?
Nomination, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry. At $46,537 for the 2020-2021 year. Mr. Myers Second, motion carried by roll call vote. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. McDonald made a motion to accept the nomination of Jennifer Hayes as GMS Guidance Counselor at a salary of $48,130 for the 2020-2021 year. Mrs. Hirschberger Second, motion carried by roll call vote. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Burke, yes. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Shane Keys, CHS Life Science Teacher. Mr. Myers Second, motion carried by roll call vote. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Burke, yes. April 29th, 2020. Mr. Myers made a motion to authorize the Superintendent to negotiate a memorandum of agreement with the LEA to either finish the school year with 180 days for both students and teachers, or finish the year with 173 days, with the school year ending for students on June 9th, 2020, and seven professional development days for teachers, with two days credited for past work, and one day designated for school closure cleanup. Mrs. McDonald Second, the motion carried by roll call vote. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. I'm sorry. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Burke, no. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to accept the nomination of Kiri Mumi as a Grade 7 English Language Arts Teacher at a salary of $67,494 for the 2020-2021 year. Mrs. McDonald Second, motion carried by roll call vote. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to accept the nomination of Kristen Dupont as a CHS Math Teacher at a salary of $41,729 for the 2020-2021 year. Mrs. Hirschberger Second, motion carried by roll call vote. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Paula Cullen Kent, GMS Teacher. Mrs. McDonald Second, motion carried by roll call vote. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. And this evening, I don't believe we have any presentations or recognitions at this time.
We do not.
So at that point, we'll go right into the Superintendent's comments.
You're going to skip correspondence?
I'm sorry. Correspondence. Tina?
Yes, I have a page full of correspondence coming on. Okay, so I've gone through and kind of summarized all of the emails that we received as of board this week. So I've kind of grouped them by topic. So regarding the last day of school, there's been a lot of discussion about when our last day of school would will be. So we had emails from Cheryl LaBolle, Heidi Ames, Kelly Perry, Renee Stancious, and Melissa Reiki regarding the last day of school for students. Some of the themes that they discussed were families juggling schoolwork and working from home and running a family, and the difficulty with doing that. The fact that we started remote learning early, earlier than some of the other districts. It's becoming more and more difficult for students and teachers to maintain this pace and keep up their energy and motivation for learning and completing their schoolwork. So all of the letters were advocating for an early release, earlier release date than was announced as the 180th day of school, which would be June 18th. So they were making the request that we consider any calculations we can possibly do to get out earlier than that. Heidi Ames requested that the school board and the LEA negotiations become public. She feels that that discussion, the discussion about the last day of school, families and students should be apprised of what the holdup is and why we have not been able to announce that yet. And so those, Melissa Reiki, her letter and her daughter Caitlin Reiki also submitted an email regarding the last day for seniors in particular, noting that seniors won't be able to take part in their senior week activities. You know, they're missing out on the graduation. Everything is kind of up in the air for them. And so an earlier release date than the rest of student population may be in order. Let's see, she cited that in Hudson and Milford, the seniors aren't getting new assignments after May 22nd, and it be that date is May 15th. Caitlin Reiki also, she's a senior at CHS this year. She's been frustrated with administration not engaging with the students regarding the ceremony and plans. She feels that any suggestions or ideas that the students have had have kind of been brushed aside with the explanation that graduation is not for students but for families, and that is, she says she's been hurt by that phrase in particular, and would like us to be more receptive to students' needs and desires for graduation. Also along the same lines as graduation was Lindsey Brown's email. She's a junior at CHS. She would prefer postponing graduation until August so we can have, you know, with the idea that it would be more similar to a traditional graduations ceremonies. She disagrees with the decision to hold a small, remote graduation in June. Let's see. And then another topic that was, that was, that was discussed, of teacher Jean Anto sent an email with an article in it called "The Teachers Are Breaking," kind of along the same lines of encouraging wrapping up the school year earlier than our 180th day. And the article spoke to a lot of, a lot of the emotions and the stress and anxiety that teachers are dealing with right now on a daily basis. And then, let's see, we have two emails regarding grades. Jill Osmore is a parent of two students at LMS, and she urges us to, when we're looking at the grading system for the fourth quarter, keep the letter grade format at LMS. She said that students who are working hard should be recognized for their hard work, and in grades six through eight, they award honors and high honors awards for students who are high achievers, and she feels that a pass fail format wouldn't allow those students to receive those recognitions. And then Rebecca Spots sent an email urging us to count V-LAC grades towards student GPAs at the high school. She cited that, you know, especially in this remote learning format, when everyone is remote learning, the former, the reasons why traditionally we haven't accepted V-LAC grades no longer apply because we're not in control of the environment we're learning in anymore. So she's, she basically said, you know, and she cited CTE programs where if we're accepting grades for CTE programs at other schools outside of our brick and mortar schools, then V-LAC's grades should count as well. I think I covered all that we received so far. I'll keep an eye on my inbox throughout the meeting for any further emails. Those were all forwarded to you, Michelle, so you should have received them.
Thank you, Tina.
Yep.
All right. Now we'll go to Superintendent comments.
Right, so the key thing I wanted to bring forward tonight is Bill and I, Principal Lonergan at the high school, and I've had a conversation just regarding exchange students. While we think it's probably unlikely that somebody who is in Europe is going to decide they want to send their child to school in America in the year to come, you know, it's possible that they're not as tuned into what we're facing and the uncertainties that we still have about next year. So I reached out to Jody Callanan, who normally coordinates around exchange students, and Jody has had zero contact so far from any families or any agencies regarding exchange students coming to Campbell. And Michelle Beccarello had the same. She hasn't had any inquiries yet. But we think it's important to suspend the policy and to basically go on record saying this isn't the year to bring somebody, somebody into the school. And it would be helpful to the school to say, we've had the discussion, dialogue, and ultimately, the board said, yeah, let's, let's put that on hold for a year. And so I wanted to bring that topic forward and see if board members had thoughts or opinions to weigh in on regarding that. And Bill, I don't know if I've, if there's something further you want to add to it, but I, I think that pretty much captures our dialogue on it.
Absolutely. It totally captures it. And I just think, given the unknowns, and there are a lot of them, you do have, we do get the push at this time of year often times for them, but my wife is talking about the, I'm sorry. But I just think that it would be nice to have the board input to say, we really don't think it's appropriate for this commentary.
I agree. Mike, I'll make a motion. Do you want it for the full year or just for half the year?
I think the full year, and you know, we can always reevaluate if we get an inquiry and if we're in some normal that makes sense to us at that point.
Okay. So I make a motion to suspend exchange students in the Guilford School District for the 2020-21 school year.
Yeah, well, two things, Rob. It's policy JECB, and this is the Litchfield School District.
JGB, JGB, sorry, admission.
I'd like to amend that to the Litchfield School District.
What did I say?
Guilford.
Guilford.
Kurt will, he'll be happy, but anyway.
Hey, Mike, I guess backing up a second, I should, I glanced through it. This policy doesn't really mention.
Rob, hold on. Do we have a second for conversation?
Oh, sorry.
I second.
Okay, so Rob Myers made the motion, and Liz made the second. Okay, now we can have the conversation.
I was just going to ask, I didn't see in this policy where it really mentions exchange students.
Yeah.
Yep, third paragraph up from the bottom on the first page.
There are various policies on exchange students.
Okay, so just that one, okay.
Yeah, we just have this one liner in our kind of tuition policy, so that's where it resides. The board has never formally adopted a, an exchange student policy, so it, it really gives tremendous ability for the schools to exercise what that's going to look like within the laws, of course. But again, probably not this year.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any more conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Epstein. So we got Tina?
Uh, yes.
Tara?
Yeah.
Rob?
Aye.
Liz?
Yes.
And Brian's an aye. So motion carries 500.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And Bill, will you take care of communicating with your staff regarding, in case any inquiries come in? You've got that, Bill Lonergan? Thank you for that. And that was really my key thing. I've got a lot of other comments to make as we work our way through the rest of the agenda.
That'll bring us to School Board comments.
I just have one quick comment. Having read through all the emails today, which I appreciate getting, just want to kind of remind people, it's not just us saying we want, everybody wants the kids out as soon as we can, but we do have state law we have to follow also between hours and days. It's not just, you know, we understand everything teachers and parents and the kids are going through, but I believe, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of this is, it's not just as simple as saying we'll, we'll waive it. It's tied into accreditations and grants, grants and all that also, correct, Mike?
It's, that's accurate. I mean, there's basically a couple of competing pieces. There's ed law relative to what we need to do, and although the Governor's executive order suspended portions of that, so, for example, we can normally do no more than five days remotely, we're going to end up doing 60 some odd days remotely. So it's, you know, it's, the suspension of ed rules was just to allow the remote ed to continue, but there are other pieces we still need to follow. And we have collective bargaining agreements with two associations. So our teachers have a CBA, our support staff have a collective bargaining agreement, and we have to uphold the terms there. So there's a lot of, a lot of pieces that have to kind of layer on top of each other in order to make everything come together. And I just, I hope the public understands that as the stewards of that, we have to keep all those pieces in mind as we work our way forward.
And I guess I just, that's, that's what I wanted to say, so people know we just can't snap our fingers and say whatever the date is, is the last day. We do have to still follow the law and the rules.
And just, just to add on to that, Rob, that it's not the Governor's decision to change it. It's the Commission of Education, and he's held fast as far as the school year remaining, the 180 days or X amount of hours in elementary is different from the middle school and high school, but there's been no variance from that. It's still as if it's a normal school year that we still have to attain those goals. So thank you for that clarification. Does anyone else have any comments? Hearing none. The only thing I'll say that, I appreciate all the feedback from the residents, and I would encourage that if there's anything else you're looking for clarification or want to ask, please feel free. I mean, it was nice to get a lot of correspondence. It'd be nice if they weren't all like directed in the same topic, but so be it, and we're more than happy to answer if anyone has any other comments or questions. So please feel free to let us know. Thank you. We also have our student reps with us this evening. I don't know if they have anything they want to add, or if they're just here observing and taking notes.
I just have a comment about graduation. Like being a senior is a big thing, and really they should be recognized for their work. So if we could just wait it out, like the stage reopening, because I know they deserve to have like real graduation, and I've just, yeah, that's how I felt about that, that's all.
So I'm curious, being the reps, is there, and Bill, I'll ask you also, is there a committee right now that is taking all kinds of different ideas and trying to work through them, like what can possibly be done? Are there students involved with that also, or the reps involved with that?
Well, there's a committee, and I'm thinking Mr. Longley, are you in it?
I, I am. And we've, we've met twice remotely. We met last week and this week. In fact, we met a couple, just a couple of hours ago. So we were tossing around a lot of different ideas. The most recent one, although I was hearing Mr. Jetty speak about one student, two parents and separated apart, so I was a little bit like, oh. We're looking at all sorts of possibilities. One was the possibility of having a drive up in front of the, in front of the entrance to the building, table set up, announce, have Mr. Cooper announce students' names, students come up, get their diploma. Parents are actually driving down between the parking lanes, can get out, take a quick picture, and then they can take their child and leave. We were also discussing today, actually doing one on the field in a similar, parents will drive their students up, they can accompany their students out to the field, walk away from the student, but as the student goes up to get the diploma, pictures taken, move over to another face in front of a, you know, a Campbell High School banner, take pictures there, and then do that in groups of 10. So a group of 10 going up one side of the parking lot, another group of 10 cars pulling up. And we had, we had tossed around a little bit the idea of a live graduation, but the idea of having 300 adults and their children, and then a stage, faculty wanting to be there. My concern was getting police and fire to approve this, make sure it's okay, that they're comfortable with that, and then being able to carry that out, because ultimately, you know, your concern is, everybody wants to give a hug and a high five and, and those things, and that's where the challenge becomes a little bit daunting. So we're willing to hear guidance here. We do have four students on the committee, and they've been actively involved in the conversations, not afraid to speak out about what they want. So that's sort of the general take of what's going on. We're trying to get all the bells and whistles in this as much as we can, but if you think about having student speakers on stage, superintendent, school board chair, administration, that's not going to work very well if you think about social distancing.
Well, it's also going, it's also going against the Governor's order as far as groups of no more than 10 along with the president.
Right, 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 absolutely. So then you'd need to get, again, the fire department would need to say, yeah, we're okay, because if we could get groups separated from each other, distant enough, we talked about painting Cougar paw prints on the field so that they knew the next step and the next step, and if you keep them painted, you can avoid some of that, but have an appropriate place for them to march to as they're going with the parent across toward the stage. So there are ways you can do that, but to do it in a large field and have 350 people there, I'm a little concerned about what that would look like.
So Bill, has, has the decision been made? Some of the, some of the emails that I've received were concerned with the information, I guess the information that came out to parents of seniors today, or maybe to students today. Has one thing gone out as far as what, along what lines you're thinking, or is everything still very much up in the air?
It's up in, it's up in the air. That's absolutely correct. Yep. I mean, I sent information out so people had a, have a general sense of the direction we were headed in. And initially, it was the two concepts, the drive up with the front of the school with the kids walking there, or the drive over toward the field and doing it on the field. Again, the idea of an on-the-field graduation with lots of people, even if it's a crowd of 300, 350, that really does fly in the face of a lot of things that, that don't make sense right now.
So, is there, what is the best way for people to contribute ideas? Because if there are only four students, Caitlin's email kind of indicated that maybe there are some others that have ideas that don't feel like they're being heard. I know that you had done a survey, so I'm just wondering, you know, how did you get good participation in the survey?
We got great, yeah, yeah, great participation. It was about 80 parents, maybe 60 students, and 30 staff members. Right, it was a really good representation. And, and we allowed for, not just the three questions, but the opportunity to comment and add ideas. And I, you know, I'm going to say this publicly, we won't make everyone happy, so we have to find the safest way to do this and to make sure that the kids get a ceremony. To me, there has to be something live about this if we can do it live in some fashion. I just struggle with the field and a large group of people on the field.
And Bill, have you established a deadline as to when you want to make a decision by?
We would, I would like to have it before the end of June, and we were looking at June 19th, June 26th as graduation dates.
Are we talking May or June?
If we did it in a limited manner. If we, if we could, some schools have gone to a July date, an August date, a November date, a December date. But those, those, kids aren't around. It's much harder to get your students.
No, Bill, what I'm asking, because I know a lot of residents are concerned, like when it's going to happen, is there a deadline when you're going to make a decision what you're going to do and when?
It's got to be, it's got to be somewhat soon, because we're talking within the next week or two, because we have to, one, get materials back from seniors in terms of school supplies, textbooks, calculators, those things. We have to get caption guns out to them. We have to, if we're going to do a live, that's not as difficult, because in, in the sense that you can, you can prepare your singer for the National Anthem, you can prepare your person doing the pledge, and get them to do it independently in different places maybe. It's doing the remote stuff, we, we, you know, if you do it with some remote aspects, you're talking filming, you're talking getting a student in to sing the National Anthem, getting a kid to do the pledge, getting the valve cell speakers, getting the class essay in, presenting, talk with other groups. So there's some recording and other pieces of that. We've actually scheduled those things to do a video of them so we can get those things done, but a from date, I'd like to work backwards on things. So part of my thinking is, what does the board want in terms of your thoughts on graduation? If you're giving me the go-ahead to do it on the field, that's, that's one I wouldn't want to do early. That would be one I would want to push way off.
I guess my question would be, Bill, can you wait till the 15th, till the next update before you finalize it, or is that pushing it?
You're talking May, May 15th?
I think the Governor's next update's the 15th of May, yeah.
Right, and we were, we were holding off to here on this most recent one, and the most recent one really is, you know, social distancing and no large groups, larger than 10, and so, so if we, we could push it back to the 15th, I think there's no doubt in my mind that the staff we have, the students, they'd be okay with us pushing off to the 15th. Just talking a month, little over a month between then and the 26th, say, if you wanted to wait and hold off till the 26th, you know? hold off till the 26th, you know, which isn't viable.
Mr. Lonigan, you know, your committee, do you have parents on that committee too? Is it staff, parents, and students?
We have not invited parents on that. It is teachers, support staff, particularly Elena Ayer, administration, and the four students as well. Yep.
Do they volunteer, or did you pick them, or are they student?
It's always the same. It's always the senior class officers.
I think there should be, as a very involved parent, which we all, no one can debate, I think there should be a parent on the board too. Maybe a neutral parent, I don't know. That's just my personal, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with inviting a parent into our meeting. We have a meeting next week, next Wednesday as well. We're actually, want to bring the fire chief and the police chief in on those meetings, so that they have a piece in this conversation, because they play a really significant role for us with respect to graduation, but also with respect to making sure we do it safely, given the current environment.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I thought we were doing this all in phases. So, this week it's no more than 10, and probably in two weeks it'll be no more than 20, and I don't know. Interesting. There's a lot to consider.
Yeah, and we're close to Massachusetts, which is a pretty hot state, and my concern with the live one is, you know, just worrying about, not that if you had one student and two parents, that would be fine, but you also have one student who has stepparents, and so you get some harder decisions about those things. But, I don't know, I just worry because Massachusetts is a pretty hot state, and we're a southern part of the state. I want to be careful about the size of a gathering that we have.
So, I think it'll also be interesting, because, did you all get the phone call from the town that they're going to be doing COVID-19 testing in our town? So, that's May 14th and May 15th, and depending on how quickly those results are going to come out, that may influence decisions.
I think we have to follow the governor's decision. No offense to the police and fire department. It's all about what the governor, if the governor says we can't have 300 people on the field, I don't know. There's a lot to consider. I just want to make, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, Liz, but the police and fire are key local help for us, so they definitely need to have some participation regardless of what direction we're going.
They're going to go by the fire, they're going to go by the governor's decree anyways.
Right, yep.
And Tara, to the point as far as testing, I mean, I know in Massachusetts right now, it's like instant testing. They go through and like, within, I don't know, like 10, 15 minutes to add the results, or less time.
Oh, that's good.
And then you go to Market Basket, and then you contact somebody that has it.
Right.
All over again. I just don't know how we can keep guessing. What if the ban isn't lifted? That, I mean, that's a.
I mean, this is up to Bill and Mike to figure out what to do, but I would say, if you can wait till the 15th of May, whatever the governor says that day, that's got to guide it, I would think. You can't then wait for two weeks later, I would think, right?
You got to just plan for the current situation, and then maybe alternatives.
I like the drive-up idea. I thought it'd sound pretty neat, and have like a parade afterwards, you know, have the cars just line up on Albuquerque after they go through, or at the back of the school, and have the fire trucks and the police department take them through the town.
We talked about the parades. The one thing to keep in mind is just the liability of it. So, we line all the students up, and now they're honking out the window, and one drives into another one, because they're celebrating, and so.
Liz's kid's not graduating, right?
So, we have to, we have to think our way through the parade. It sounds awesome.
Too soon, right?
Right, and, you know, we've kind of pushed back on the parade, and I think, Mike, you're correct in that. But we do want, if we do this sort of drive-up, we want the parents driving the students, okay, and so we do have a greater sense of, you know, appropriateness. Not that the kids won't drive appropriately, but they just, you got to be careful.
Yep. And along with that, I'm just curious, because I know that some places are doing this, I know it's more difficult, like, once you come into August, because kids will be going off to school, possibly. Has there been any consideration that if you do end up doing like this drive-up type thing or anything else, of next year, having like a dual graduation, maybe like this class, you know, do it in the morning, and then the other class do it at night? You know, you can pick any day. It doesn't have to be a Friday, I mean, as far as for them graduating, and I would think for the most part, there may be a few that are, you know, in the service that would not be able to join, but you'd probably still get like 95% of the students back.
There's a school that's doing that. They're having back-to-back graduations next year. I forget which one it was, and I just, our kids are, they want us to have their celebration and recognition this year.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying, let's say you do the drive-up one, but still hold a second graduation, like a regular graduation next year.
Yeah, we actually talked a little bit about that, is doing in the one in the morning, one in the afternoon, or back-to-back two days in a row if you get good weather. Yep, we had discussed that. 11 to 2, 11 to 1, and then be a traditional one, your normal one for 6 o'clock to 7, whatever time that takes. Yep.
And maybe the kids will get double the gifts.
Are we allowed to ask Bill something else, non-related to graduation?
It depends. Well, so we have a whole topic coming up under the principal's reports, if we.
Okay, I'll talk about it then, I guess.
All right. Anything else? School board's done, reps are done. That'll bring us to community forum. Do we have any?
Tina, you're muted.
Sorry. That was quick. All right, I did, I have received two more emails. The first one is from Jim Norton. I'm just going to read it, because I haven't had a chance to look at it. There has to be a better solution for the graduation than what we received from CHS this week. We need to find a way for all the kids to be at the graduation at once, so they can hear, they can see their friends cross the stage. I would like to make a suggestion to have a meeting with the CHS graduation team with one or two senior parents to hear the ideas we have for graduation. Thanks, Jim Norton. And then, let's see, the second email I received was from Carrie Piccone at Eight Month Street. She asked, where do we stand on switching to hours versus days so that the schools are equal in days and hours? My understanding is LMS, all grades are just some, has too few hours. Why is this, and as a board, are there plans to rectify this?
Well, just to clarify that, right now, all three schools do have enough hours to go two hours rather than days. Anything else? Tina, that's it?
That was it.
What you were asking, to me, it sounded like she was asking, what are we doing about this in the future?
And what I'm saying is, LMS does have enough hours.
Why is this? Well, I, some of the Facebook comments that I've seen too, you know, in the past, we've always said we have to go 180 days, our CBA is based on days, we can't switch to hours. So, people are wondering, why are we able to do that at this point, if we haven't been able to do that in the past? So, what has changed?
Well, nothing's changed. Our students are able to get out by hours rather than days. That was what the question was. So, can our students get completed by hours rather than 180 days? And the answer is yes. All right?
Am I able to submit an idea that someone submitted to me?
Sure.
All right. It's regarding graduation, and this person wanted to do graduation. I don't know if this idea just came up or not, but they wanted me to show it to the school board, like, almost like a drive-in movie theater almost, and we use like the parking lot, and everyone's in their cars, and each family gets limited to like a car or two. And we could set up like a radio channel, where people could do the speeches and stuff, and still maintain the six-feet, like, rule with people coming up, but like, we could have everyone in their cars. It was an idea that was submitted to me.
I think some churches are doing that, Trevor.
Yeah.
Well, and I think some graduations are also being done, like in the drive-in theater kind of concept, so we have heard that.
Too bad Ritz is gone.
You know, the one thing that, well, I'm not sure everybody in town would agree that it's too bad, but at any rate, I think the, the point I was making earlier, so I don't believe it was on air, is that we have to remember with family units, the social distancing isn't as important. So, you know, my family are four, we can all be together, right? Because we are together all the time. So, it just changes a way to think about spacing out. So, we're not literally talking six feet between people. You know, we can put groups of family units together, like in the car, or like in a box on a field, just conceptually, that that's what I was just saying. Let's really think our way through what the rules are saying, and what we have to do to keep each other safe, right? So.
All right.
I just got a follow-up from Mrs. Piccone. So, she's referring back to in our meetings, this is about the hours to days. So, she's going back to previous meetings when we have said things like, 7th and 8th grade need 180 days to get their hours in, and, you know, CHS does their, can complete those hours in fewer days, and GMS can complete those, their hours in fewer days. And so, I think the question that she was asking was, what happened with the calculation that now, that the 8th grade have enough hours to get out earlier than 180 days?
So, because, well, the calculation came down to the enrichment time, and what exactly is taking place during enrichment, and what Principal Leclider has said is that, because students during enrichment are working on, you have to go to the Ed rule, what is instructional time, and it says that you are working on educational objectives under the supervision of a certified educator. And so, therefore, the enrichment time is able to be added into the calculation. And we surveyed students, actually, and students, you know, some reported that they didn't view it as valuable time, but others viewed it as very valuable time. And so, when you take what the Ed rule says and apply it to the enrichment section of the middle school schedule, then you end up with enough hours to be done. So, it really was a reconsideration of the enrichment time and where it fits in the calculation. So, the other piece is that I have asked Principal Leclider and Assistant Principal Thayer to clarify the purpose of the enrichment, maybe even, is enrichment the right term to use for it? Because I think it lends itself to various interpretations of that time. So, they're going to do some work this summer, so that we'll have a better, you may not even hear it called enrichment in the future. It may have a different name, and it'll be cleared that that's for, that it's clearly instructional time for all kids.
That makes sense. Thank you. I think that was, it was the enrichment piece that we were missing. And I've gotten a few more emails. Let's see. I have an email from Jordan Canely. I'm a senior, and we understand that safety is the number one concern. I know that I'm speaking on behalf of the majority of my class, that graduation is more than just our family seeing us receive a diploma and walking away. This is our last time together, and we want to graduate together. We understand that it is difficult to make a decision right now, but we wish that the drive-up approach is a backup. And if we could wait it out and see what the state does until July.
We're getting into like a public dialogue at this point.
She's got two more.
Okay.
I was going to say.
Then, Lorelei Brown is also a senior, because as a high school senior, I'm very upset with this idea. I don't want to graduate along. I'm kind of skimming at this point. I want to be with the family, create, and through the past 12 years. The way that the survey sent to students, staff, and families did not even have the options being discussed. No senior that I've spoken to has had a problem waiting through summer or beyond in order to have this moment happen in the manner it is supposed to. Walking on a stage with just myself and family does not have any meaning to me, in comparison with graduating with my classmates. She feels the committee-making decision is not large enough to represent the senior class and their families. She'd like to see seniors that have volunteered to be on the committee, because they feel strongly about the situation, and parents is, teachers should be involved. She says she understands the ban is a concern, and the fact that it may not be lifted as soon as we may hope. We, as students, are not concerned about the time of graduation, rather just that it happens. I believe that at least the majority of students are willing to wait as long as possible in order to have this milestone happen like it is supposed to.
I don't understand that.
Yeah, I feel, I do not envy the administration, and I do not envy these kids being in this situation. It's, I feel like it's one of those that we can't possibly please everybody, and we just have to do the best we can, so.
And if I can just jump in with kind of my thought, having done graduation a few times, it's the responsibility of the school to have a graduation ceremony, right? So, it's really important that we understand this is the ceremony, and that we can't possibly accommodate everybody or meet everybody's needs with the ceremony. So, you have to say, this is how we're going to confer a degree onto our graduates. And I liken it to a marriage, you know, you go off to church, and there is a ceremony that is sort of done within certain guardrails and certain traditions and frameworks, and then as soon as the ceremony's over, you have the celebration. And we mix these things up sometimes, right? You have a celebration, that's the reception, that's after the ceremony, and that is incredibly personalized. That's a, you know, it's for each family to sort of design their own celebration piece, and to, on their time, at their pace, within their own framework, to have that ceremony piece take place, but to have the celebration take place. The ceremony, the school has to plan and base that on tradition. And so, you know, if we keep those two things in mind, if we think about the wedding analogy, I think it's our job to design an appropriate conferral of degree ceremony, and then it's up to the town, how are you going to celebrate your kiddos? I mean, that's really outside the realm of the school at that point. So, we'll find a way. There'll be some celebratory things, don't get me wrong, with graduation, but I just think we've got to, we've got to design it within all the, within all the frameworks that we have.
So, Tina, at this point, I would say any other correspondence you received, we'll just put in the minutes?
Okay.
Or we'll just wait until our next meeting, then we can just go through them as we do without the correspondence.
Yep, my inbox is cleaned out again now, so that's all of it.
Excellent. And I just want to state something also, and I'm certain I speak for the board, that there's nothing we wish more than to allow the seniors to have a normal graduation. But again, we need to think of the safety of all, and it's not going to be an easy decision, whatever Mr. Lonigan decides. I can't imagine, you know, going through this process and not be able to have the ceremony the way you want to. And again, I'm pretty sure, and I'm speaking for the board, that it's a difficult decision, needs to be made, but we're hoping that the best one will be made. So, thank you. That'll bring us to principals' reports, and for those viewing, contained within this report is for GMS, end-of-year events, as long as with LMS.
You skipped a minute.
Of course I did. I always do. All right, we have minutes from April 15th, 2020 for approval. Is there a motion?
Making a motion to accept the April 15th and April 29th.
Second.
Motion is made by Rob, and second by Tara.
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Brian's an aye. So, again, the principal reports include information of end-of-year ceremonies, grading, end-of-year events, but I know most of the information is pushed out to parents already, so, but they are printed. And are we going to Mr. Lonigan right now?
What was that?
Yep, we can, so, we're at the, I don't have the type agenda in front.
BA, I don't know if he's separate or not. So, I think we're at end-of-year ceremonies, grading.
So, end-of-year ceremonies, I mean, part of what we were going to do was to talk about end-of-year ceremonies. Are there, is there a link for those separate? Are there, is there a link for those separate or they, so basically in the principals' reports, they address end of year ceremonies. So if you look at the LMS report, Principal Lecklider has some references to end of year ceremonies embedded into his report. I think the GMS report, they have it. So I just want, want the board to understand that, while we're still trying to zero in on the date of when it is, our intent is to then honor all of the rites of passage that we typically have. And there's an updated summary for the board embedded into those reports. And graduation is the biggest one. So we've obviously spent time tonight talking about graduation because that's the one that, um, is mo- most noteworthy. So I don't know if anybody has questions or comments on other, um, end of the year pieces?
I'm just so confused about everything. I'm ca- so we're waiting until we get more direction from the governor to decide what we're doing for the graduation.
Correct.
And there's a small committee who's, I'm sorry to recap all this. I'm trying to take all the discussion in. We're going to offer different things. We might wait, we might not wait. Is that exactly what's going on?
Liz, what I, what I'm hearing is that, uh, so there's been a graduation committee at Campbell High School since they opened, where they established very firm traditions. I mean, why do we walk through arches? Because a committee has framed all this out, right? So, and, and some of the people have served on it from the beginning. They were the founding members of it. And so they now are involving, uh, students and I think we're going to involve some parents, to figure out how do we take all that traditional ceremonial stuff and mesh it together with the, the most up to date guidance that we get from the governor's office? So, uh, you know, they're now compiling possibilities. Other schools are doing the same thing. I mean, somebody pointed me towards Salem High. They said, hey, take a look at what Salem's doing, um, because they've come up with something pretty good. So, um, so I think we're going to take all of that, put it in the box and shake it and then say, okay, what, what comes out is the right thing to do, given our history, our tradition, what our students are asking and scale. I mean, here's the bottom line. We have about a hundred students that we need to figure out. We're not a school of hundreds of students that, that we need to, to figure out how to do this. So I think what, what fits and works for us can differ from other locations. So that's my sense of what we're trying to do. And at this point, we haven't jelled around anything anyway. And so with the governor's advice coming out in about a week or 10 days, um, that see where, see where that lands. And then by then we'll have figured pieces of it out. Now, Bill, I just answered the question. I want to make sure you're comfortable with where I went with it.
I just, people are asking for a recap and I, honest to God, and don't get mad, I think they deserve the pomp and circumstances, whether it's this year or next year. And I know that's just me as an upcoming senior or mom, that even if we give them a drive by or this, that, I think, I enjoy, that's one of my favorite parts of being a school board member is doing the pomp and circumstances in the pictures. And maybe it's not this year, maybe it is back to back. Is that completely out of the question for next year, Mike?
No, that's, that's one of the, that's one of the possibilities that's on the table. But, but we just have to recognize that between now and next June, things will happen. There will be a student.
Absolutely. Okay. I'm sorry. There was so much stuff.
They, they may join the military and be deployed and be overseas, you know, so that's not going to work for that student, right?
We have, we have two in that, in that state right now who will not be available on June 28th and in July not be available after that. So, you know, and some kids are going to roll away early to college athletics, you know, in late July, early August and, you know, all of those other things. So, yeah.
But I, I can also tell you. And, and having done this, I mean, I've seen when we had to suddenly move a graduation indoors and you come up with different rules when you, you know, the fire department is saying, we're going to allow only so many people in. And when a grandparent shows up and is just demanding, I don't care what your rule is, I'm getting in that gym. And now, you know, so all of this is going to depend. I mean, we've got protesters ignoring every order to, you know, protest at the state and you just need to be ready for that, you know? A senior class that decides, we're young, this isn't affecting us and we're just going to have a class hug. We don't care what rules have been put in place. We're going out with a class hug. What do we do? What do we do at that point, right? So those are just the, those are the realities that Bill is stressing over in his mind, even though he's not letting you know it because you know, th- there's a certain amount of, we've put it in place, but ultimately if people decide to not play by the rules, um, and we've created an environment that's unsafe, somebody will finger point back at us. So it's hard.
I agree. And I also agree how hot it would be for kids. We are a small town and how not to hug, even parents hugging kids and other p- kids that have been at my house for 12 years.
Yes.
You're right.
That, that's what I mean about the ceremonies taking place outs- uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, the celebrations taking place outside. You know, so if, if you're hugging kids at, uh, a- a- at a party at somebody's house, that's between you and the family, right? Might not be wise, given everything we're being told, but, um, it's beyond the, the district's control.
Okay. Thank you for recapping.
You're welcome.
I think it's also helpful to know, am I unmuted? That the senior class, so anybody who's a senior, if you don't know who's on the graduation committee, it's the senior class officers. Is that what you're saying? And that they should be in touch with them or they could drop you an email, Mr. Lonigan?
Yep, absolutely.
You know, if they didn't have a chance to participate in that survey, that they can reach out to any of those five people to have their voices heard.
And this, I think the same thing goes along with parents where someone mentioned that, you know, there should be more parents on the committee. And I'm certain if anyone is interested, they can reach out to Mr. Lonigan and see if there is room. I'm, I don't think you want like a 200 person committee, but if there are several parents out there feel strongly that they want to be on it, I, I'm sure Bill would be more than happy to entertain that.
Well, I, Mr. Norton in, uh, it sounds like Mr. Norton already, uh, offered.
Yeah, see, I've been in contact with Jim. Yep.
I think it's important to have parents on there because we, not only are we parents, but we can communicate with other parents who are working and get their, okay, I'm done.
Any other end of the year ceremony points that the board wanted to ask from the, if not, we'll just, just know that we're working on all of them. We, we had made progress this year with our eighth grade, uh, step up night, um, which is out the window now because it's not going to be able to be done the way we had planned. So that's, you know.
Well, I'll, I'll breach on the conversation and I'll just throw it out there because I'm certain, again, there are probably 200 or so students that are looking forward to the prom.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Well, try to have a dance with social distance.
I understand. I, I guess, I guess I'm just asking for, you know, what our audience is out there. Has there been any conversation? I mean, have we, are we still trying to go forward with, with something or is this again, something that is on the back burner at this time?
We, we, we brought up a number of different possibilities in our conversations. It was originally scheduled for Alpine Ridge in, in Hollis. Um, we've canceled, we've canceled with them. We've, we then talked about the possibility of postponing, um, possibly if we get some different orders for July, August, to maybe do something during the summer uh, for these kids before they, particularly it's a junior, senior prom. So, um, some of our kids have already bought their dresses and, you know, they've, they're, they're ready to go. So we've talked about postponing again. Social distancing, can you have a, a, a dance with 150 students? If we were to do it, we would want to do it on campus and, uh, the food services director has been interested in, in catering. So if it were possible, that would be a nice way to maybe get it done in July or August. We also talked about the possibility of creating a homecoming with homecoming in the fall, having a homecoming prom that the seniors could come back to if they did come back to Campbell for homecoming. And they could pitch a state in a formal, then maybe, uh, yes.
Bill, can I ask why all the dances have to be in the cafeteria? It's so tiny. It's so small. The ceilings. Why can't we have dances in the gym? I'm sorry, Brian.
Probably because of the floor.
Great question. You could.
Okay.
If you had floor mats, my former school, we rolled out floor mats and we used them for, you name it. We used it for every possible event. We used it for dances. We used it for, for large banquets. We used it for the craft fair that they had. Now you're talking eh, a number of thousands of dollars, $2,000 to rent floor covering in the high school to cover the floor. So that then you could have a, a really decent, you could, you know, decorate and have a nice floor and a nice dance and a DJ. Uh, but you're going to pay some significant money for that, you know? And you take $2,000 by 150 kids. You're talking a, a fit, pretty fair chunk of change that you're going to pay just for a floor cover.
So Bill, along the lines of, of the prom, um, again, I'm sure some people are interested. Is, is there a committee and, and what's that formed with?
So the, the June, it's the, the prom is run by the junior class. Okay. So she had the junior class takes that on. So it's, it's Dawn Parker, who's the junior class advisor and her class officers. And they put it on for the juniors and seniors, but they're the class that, that, uh, that sponsored the dance.
So are they the only members of the committee, like trying to make a decision what to do?
With, with, working with administration. So Mike Perez working with them all along here and with me, you know, but I don't, I have not worked specifically.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is I know that there's been several parents that have put out things as far as ideas and thoughts of, you know, some type of prom. So I didn't know if that, that information was getting back to you and then being followed back to the committee?
Sure. They can send it to me. They can send it to Mike Perez or they can send it to Dawn Parker, any of the three of us.
Alright. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have anything else from Mr. Lonigan?
Bill, while we're, um, while we're on it, the, uh, I, I know you were talking with your team about the V-Lax credit, GPA, uh, plus the CTE thing.
Correct.
It, are, are discussions ongoing? Can you just give us an update on where the high school is?
Sure, sure. That's very simple. And, and actually there was another piece to this that, that I do want to talk about, but, um, it's, it's, the only place it's mentioned is in our student handbook. And in the student handbook, it says that, um, that a student's GPA will be only comprised of, of credits in classes earned at Campbell High School. So all we have to do is change the student handbook, have the board approve that. And what we would like is, we would like CTE courses, we would like V-Lax, and we would like students who take college courses while they're at Campbell to have those weighted into their GPA. So that should, I don't think that should be that difficult. I think that's a, an appropriate way. We're talking about accredited institutions, you know, so it just makes sense that we would, uh, we would transfer those cheap, those credits earned into the student's GPA.
Thank you.
Okay. And then one other thing, if I, if I could, um, final exams. We're in such a weird world right now with respect to, and you're hearing it in terms of kids are tired, they're frazzled. How do you do a real meaningful final exam? So we've had discussions about not having final exams this year. And having instead summative competencies for kids where they could demonstrate their competency in some sort of a project, a presentation through a MEET, um, through ways that the teachers could determine. And, and that would go to, to their quarter grade, but it wouldn't calculate into a final exam grade. We don't calculate senior final, seniors don't take final exams. So their final GPA is based on their first quarter, second quarter, midterm exams and, and third and fourth quarter grades. But no final exam for seniors. It wouldn't be difficult for us to do that with our students. And I think it makes more sense to do that, um, especially this year, given the, the, sort of the rapid transition we've made and the, the challenges that we've faced. I think it would be the right thing to do for, for students, most importantly, but I think also in terms of managing the end of the year schoolwork. So I wanted to throw that out and get the board's, um, the board's thoughts on that.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, I think that's, I think that aligns really well with competency based education and kind of the direction that we want to go in. Um, you, you can't, you know, the final exam, if you, traditional final exam, you have, you know, the kids come in and they spend an hour taking a big long test. Um, at this point, you can't, you can't determine the validity of that test. You can't determine if the students have been working together. You have no idea how it was completed. You can't do it at a set time of day. So I think going to a, a project based summative is, makes a lot of sense. The question that I have is, um, group work. Um, my, you know, my daughter has had some classes and I know, you know, I'm assuming everybody, you know, we have a collaborative mindset at CHS. So there have been a lot of group projects coming out and, and my daughter loves them because she's, she's forced to communicate with her classmates, you know? But I would, I would be very wary of assigning group projects like that as a summative.
I, I agree with you. I agree. I don't think that's an appropriate way to handle it. I think that the child needs to demonstrate his or her competence, however that might be. And I think that really is, when you're looking at a, a sort of a major summative, it needs to be their, their work that you're, that you're supposed to.
Yeah, thank you.
What do you think about that, Chloe? Chloe?
She's a senior. I think that's the matter.
She's a junior.
Oh, she's a, that's right. She's a junior. That's right.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, sorry. My Chromebook was really slow for a second. So I like that because honestly, doing a final exam, like just trying to focus on a final exam after doing two months of remote learning would be really difficult. So I like doing this better, doing like a summative grade for competency because then it's just like doing an assignment. So I just find it a lot better, more relaxed.
Awesome. Good. So would seniors also be completing a summative?
I don't think we'd need to. I think we treat them as a, as a way, we traditionally treat them, you know? Teachers are certainly going to have summative assignments anyway, you know, but in terms of the final, and, and I don't even want to use the term final exam because I think it takes us in a better direction. So if you talk about a summative competencies, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they have to. I know that some teachers were certainly going to have summative assignments going to the end of the year, but some teachers may not. They may have cumulative summatives going on over the course of this quarter. And, and it's not important to have a huge or a more significant one at the end. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Bill, just, and, and just to clarify, I don't want to put you on the spot. So if you're not ready to do this by only say so, but like the, uh, the V-Lax question or the accredited institutional credit for GPA. Are you, are you proposing to bring forward revised handbook language for next year? Or are you asking the board to amend the existing handbook language for the current semester?
Uh, what, my plan was to amend it for next year, not for this year.
Come on. It's not there.
I'm going to mute you, Liz.
You know, I, I'm, I'm a rule follower, you know, so it's in that book and it's, it's stated in that book till June 30th and then July 1.
These are special times. I keep hearing that. This is special times. So you're telling me Tommy's math, my son's math work doesn't count as much as the math work my other son is doing?
I, I'm not going to say that, Liz. I think he's probably doing perfectly valid and appropriate math work, but my handbook does.
So I, I, okay, I, I'm sorry. I opened, I opened the can of worms. If, if, if I could just.
Could you ask the staff or could you retroactively, anybody still enrolled?
It wouldn't count towards the GPA anymore.
I'm, I'm not.
Because Bill said the grades.
I'm not sure we can do that legally.
But it's okay to count remote learning for half the year for some kids and not for the others. I have a huge problem with that. Meanless.
So let, let, let us do this. I, I, I put Bill on the spot and asked him, um, he's answered it, but if people have thoughts, contact Bill. We can still consider this, um, down the road. I mean, at least I, we know where he's headed for next year. So.
Could we make a motion to give Bill the ability to amend if it's possible this year? That way he can do it. If, if it can be worked out, that he doesn't have to come back to us?
Well, I think he wants to talk to his admin team as far as to make sure that this is what.
No, I, I understand that, but if we, if we had a motion that passed.
Well, if we did, the thing is, if we did that, Rob, we'd make the motion. It would pass now. And we don't know what the will of the, the admin team is. Is that correct, Bill?
Well, no, I think they'd be in support of it. Here's, here's my concern. How far back are we going to go then? Are we going back just only the 1920 school year or are we thinking eh, we want to go back further than that? Because.
We did that with competency based recovery. We started it last year. So kids that are ju- that are juniors still have some on their report cards, and sophomores do not. I'm sorry, I'm being nasty, Liz.
So Liz, Liz, how about we do this?
Personally, I'd like to go back, if anybody's still in school, but I'd be happy if you could do it. With the circumstances this year, I'd be happy if you could just do it for the 1920 school year.
So how about, how about if we let Bill go back and have discussion, and we can put it on the agenda for our next meeting?
Okay.
And have discussion then, maybe Bill come back with more information or more direction.
We'll, we'll talk about it tomorrow morning.
Good. Then, like I said, we'll just put on our agenda for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Is that all for me?
Um, I think so. I think it is.
Are we talking about grading? Later?
So Bill spoke to us a little bit, let me just, Bill, if you stick with me, because we've, we've had several conversations with Mary and the principal. So the concept that we're working around is this no harm grading. So basically, kind of the contract that parents had with the school district, we were going to deliver instruction in a bricks and mortar sort of format, all the grading rules, handbook rules, et cetera. They came to a screeching halt on March 13th, when it became, Friday the 13th, I'll point out, when it became obvious that we were going to have to shut things down. And so what's ended up happening is the last third of the school year has been operated in a way that our staff wasn't prepared to deliver initially, parents and students weren't envisioning having to access. So things kind of changed drastically. And so we've talked about, as the rug kind of got pulled out from underneath everybody, this concept of no harm grading. So some students, I want to point out, have thrived in the online environment. They've, this, hey, I don't have to get up first thing in the morning, I can sleep in a little bit later, and then I can get online and I can do this work, and, you know, this has worked out really well for some students. But other students who are normally good students in terms of school have found this to be quite a curveball and have found this cumbersome and difficult. So we're working through, how do we grade and kind of recognize and honor what our students have been able to show and grow, and at the same time, not having people, having students get hurt in terms of their grade because we changed the the framework on them over a weekend. And so that's the piece that we're trying to sketch out and to have really firm. So, you know, when Bill talks about shifting away from final exams, that's kind of a no harm grading concept, because, you know, we have to, we have to change and pivot in a way that allows us to, to make sure that our students aren't hurt in the process of all this. So that's where we are with grading. We've engaged in conversation with our tech people just about what what is possible, what can we extract out of the system? And it seems as if putting a guide point on the end of term three is the easiest and most logical way, because teachers graded assignments, closed out grades at that term three point, where if you go back a few weeks prior, it's really kind of sloppy in terms of, well, maybe there was an assignment that wasn't in yet, or some, some assignments were caught up, others weren't. So, you know, bringing it to a natural point like the end of quarter three, and then saying, there's our guideposts, how do we make sure that students aren't harmed from that point forward, is our ongoing dialogue, so.
But what's the high school, the high schools' semesters? And I know, right, they don't have a ton of grades in in March because the semester just ended in the end of January. Were there progress reports in March?
There were, April, yep, early April.
Perfect. That's what I would say for the high school.
Yeah, that's how I would go.
And so we.
I would, I would even suggest the end of second quarter, because I know that, at least for my kids, there were some classes that for the first three weeks, they, it was very hard for them making the transition, so they actually did get harmed at the end, you know, the beginning, the end of the third quarter. So I would prefer taking it back to.
When does the third quarter end?
In high school terror, because in high school, classes are by semester.
Well, maybe that's middle school then.
Middle and elementary can be, can't it?
Yeah.
So I bring it up here, because I just want the board to know that that's the conversation we're engaged in, we're trying to find like some clear decision rules and guardrails we can set up, so that it's clear what that would look like and and.
I think having, I think having those guardrails set up sooner, the sooner the better, just so we can set those expectations. If we're looking at potentially counting hours and and students being done with school on June 9th, that's a month away, that's only four weeks. So, I mean, I know the urgency is there to to get it and the want to get it right, but I, I, you know, I feel like putting this on teachers halfway through this, this crazy fourth quarter is kind of, I don't know, I I expect resistance from the teachers in that we, we didn't know, like if if this had been set up going into fourth quarter, I think it would have been very clear and not if they'd guided their instruction in some way.
Tina, it's no different than the the families and the kids, everyone will adjust.
Well, that too, I mean, that was my next point, is, you know, I I have a, a kid who's doing just fine, and I have a kid who's, you know, like many families are having a tough time. And the more information we can get out to families about, you know, how we're making accommodations because of remote learning, I think the better. So the sooner we can get this rolled out, I think the better for everybody involved.
I agree with you on that, Tina, but I think the one, the one concern, and this is, you know, high school teachers have these really rigorous expectations for their students. And and one of the frustrations is sometimes, and I, and I know why this is happening, but kids who aren't, who now aren't participating and now are really struggling, and they're struggling for a variety of different reasons. And you get that, that thought in your head, which is, why aren't they? How, what do I have to do? And trying to push them, get them involved and get them, and and that's really difficult right now. So you, I know I'll get some pushback of, do no harm, but the child is not doing anything, the child's not reaching out to me, those, those, those.
Right, right. Even as a parent, I'm struggling with that. You know, how, how hard do, how much, how much arguing do I have to do with my kid to get her to do her work? And is it worth it?
Correct.
Right now, our focus has to be on their, their social and their mental and emotional health and.
Absolutely, yep, I see that.
That, that has to take precedence, and I think this is one of those times.
What if a student was failing at the end of the third, during progress reports and continues to fail, do they get a pass? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, you know.
I would assume that the teacher would have to get them, you know, this is what you need to do to make, to pass the class, otherwise they would grade, right?
And it begs, and it begs another question here, is for those kids, you know, what are we thinking about in terms of recovery if the child doesn't, does not pass competencies, failing grades, and now, okay, we want to offer some sort of a recovery program, I'm a little bit concerned about what those numbers might look for for our students, and then how we might recover them in a remote learning environment, if that's where we are at the end of June, you know? So this is another sort of piece of that little puzzle. But but I absolutely understand kids being stressed and struggling with, this isn't what we signed up for.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night, good night. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
And that's going to bring us to end of year encumbrances purchases. So Corey, you want to take us through this?
Sure. I spent some time talking to the administrators and directors, basically about, you know, we do have savings in certain areas come the end of this year, but we have some projects and things going on next year, specifically facilities. So I went through and made a list of some things from the the folks that I heard back from. Bill Lonigan brought to my attention the increase in enrollment in the fax program, which highlights the the age of the textbooks for that program and the need in there. So between Mr. Lonigan and Mary, we're looking at central areas of funding to get for that. I also spoke with Josh Knight and Jen Matthews for High School Athletics. One of the things that he would like to do is the purchase of replica jerseys for the the spring season senior athletes that lost their season, something to commemorate for them that, that they lost and something they can take with them.
I love that.
You know, he's, he's looking at that being about $1,000 expense, be very, well, for all the sports, I mean, you look at spring track and all those, all those sports, so replicas, they'll be Campbell, they can take them with them. He also brought up the, the idea that the uniforms, although he's, he's working to get everything on a cycle, he's still a bit behind and it's going to take some time. So if we have savings in some areas, I'd like to, to bring those up to date, so that the uniforms for Campbell, when Campbell High School teams walk into a, into a facility or walk up to a field, everybody knows that's Campbell. He spoke to inconsistent colors of their shirts and hats, chair and track, older uniforms, we get a little expense, mostly because of the complexity of the, the chair uniforms themselves and the sheer number of athletes that are on the track team. So these types of things he's looking at, having coaches wear consistent uniforms. So it's out there, so everybody's Campbell toast. The outdoor bleachers at the, on the stadium field that failed two years ago, they're still there, they're not, they're not safe for people to be on the distance between fences or who I, they were recommended to actually be taken out of there, but nobody had to sit. He was looking into mobile chairs that could be moved to the, the softball, baseball field if needed, where a, a set of two aluminum bleachers with old, probably about three to four times the people that, that are there, and that, $12,000, you could have those in there, and if you need them on softball, while they can be moved. Also, the lacrosse for the stadium field, back, lacrosse nets, because something, he has a concern, someone really rockets the shot towards the soft, you know, that a ball could get over and potentially hurt somebody, there's a practice going on or whatever. So those are some of the items with high school. Moving down to GMS, something that, that Scott brought from my, but I didn't realize that we, we looked into budgeting a fifth, third grade, but we didn't look into furnishing that classroom. So just something that's up for discussion. Do we want to look into furniture classroom or with enrollment, do we think we have enough furniture down in that building in order to take care of that fifth, third grade classroom?
When was the last time we had a fifth, third grade?
And that, that, I'm not sure.
We can dig back into the enrollment reports and and figure that out, I'm sure, based on the numbers, because we have those.
It was when we had the portable for the third grade.
Yeah.
It's been a while then.
It would help me if if we had a, had this information in like a spreadsheet with cost estimates for each thing.
I'm working on getting some of that together.
Okay.
Hey, Corey, I know, I know, I know it was a, that was a bad word. I know the new computer program is a mess this year coming in, but where you just mentioned that portable, did we ever contact that company in Maine to see if we can get new portables since we're paying rent for them and they're kind of dated now?
The cost is going to be, even to, to bring one in, it's going to, it would bring up the, the lease rate to about 60 grand a year.
Okay.
And so.
And and our goal is to phase those out, to be honest, so, you know, we think replacing those with newer portables just keeps the problem going, if you would, so our hope is to have no portables at LMS.
It just replaces Band-Aid, really. In terms of capital planning, I do have, and we can have further discussion at some point, Wendy Hill Associates and the Energy Consultants both given us their time to work towards some capital planning stuff, so at some point, we should review those with you guys, just to see if that's something we move forward with, if we want to steer with, to get firmed up on what direction we want to go in terms of capital planning. And then in going through the FY21 budget, specifically facility, I asked Dave to look through like certain replacements of equipment, he budgeted for one new auto scrubber for the floors of CHS, we have two more pieces of equipment down in, down in LMS that are in desperate need of replacement, is that something we'd be willing to do? In looking at buildings, we had GMS where we're continually doing the asbestos abatement, is that something we want to continue in FY21, or do we want to re-allocate those funds? So that project was approved, do we want to continue in that section within that building? Also, we look at window replacement in the first grade wing, where between the two, we're looking at about $50,000. Do we want to continue to think that, that much, that building? Dave is looking into locksmiths, in terms of the, the rekeying in LMS. And we're also looking at the security devices that are both approved within Warren Article, specifically the stuff. At CHS, the, the loading dock that we budgeted to patch got so unsafe that we actually had to rebuild a, a stairwell there that's now pressure-treated wooden or roomed up, so that's much next year's budget that can be allocated. So, and then I was also talking to Dave today about we had put in about $25,000 for replacement of the dugouts at all four dugouts at the high school. Do have a contractor that'd be willing to come in, he's going to re-estimate it, and he's willing to defer that building to, or defer that building until after July 1st and potentially get it done sooner, maybe just before they close down. Also, I want to tell that I've reached out to the vendor, we finally, we got the Gaga pit that the, the PTO donated for GMS, that is now installed at GMS. Unfortunately, it is in wing radius, that old swing down there.
It seems really smooshed in there, Corey.
Say again?
It seemed really smooshed in there, the Gaga pit, I thought it was going to go out separate.
Yeah, it, it, it came in, it can be moved, and that's, that is part of the plan, it is going to be moved, but the old swing set there needs to be replaced due to damage, primax pull-ups to get rid of it, so I'm working with the vendor to see if I can get a new one in there. The kids will really have some stuff to look forward to when they do get a change back to that playground, it's going to be a whole different playground for them. And the Gaga pit can be moved, so, and our guys can do that, we don't need to have a... Other than that, I'm hoping at the next, well, not hoping, I will at the next board meeting have a full set of financials to try and better picture where we're going to be at here, and I should put this listing, but then, like I said before, I'm trying to put a, I am putting a spreadsheet together that will summarize all this information for you, easier to, easier to.
Yeah, because you'll need us to go through and, and vote on each item to, or, okay.
If, or, you know, if it's something we want to, if it's a, if it's a thing that we just want to go ahead and do at this point in the year where we know there's going to be some savings, so I think, you know, yeah, next board meeting, I'll have a more concise list of things that we can vote on, but this is just some of the things that have come up so far.
Corey, are we looking at putting hand washing stations in at GMS by the cafeteria?
That has not, at this point, been on the radar, I can definitely look into that.
Personally, I think, given what's going on right now and some of the concerns that have been expressed previously about that, I think it would be a very wise investment.
Okay.
So along those lines, Tyra, I was going to have, have the group think about, maybe take some time, go through the.
take some time, go through the, um, budget for next year and see if there's anything that we can either spend ahead. And also at the same time, if there are any things such as like hand washing, you can think of that, hey, maybe, you know, if we do have a little extra money, we can do this. That now's the time to formulate that list and, and spread those ideas around. I mean, I'm, I'm certain everyone probably has some thoughts of, you know, things like that, like hand washing things. So something to think about, you know, before the year end. So Cory, I got just two questions. The first is for C H S as far as the bleachers. Cause I know the Booster Club has had conversation about, uh, purchasing them and they started collecting monies and, you know, but they realized, I mean, they're extremely expensive. So I know these are like portable, but my thought was, can these be added on to? Because the whole goal was to get larger bleachers, not just two that replicate what's there now.
Right. The boosters were planning that as part of their long-term plans.
Right. It's probably way.
I had an opportunity to talk to Josh today, if that helps. Um, they said that the boosters are now looking at doing the signs in the gym. Um, and those bleachers that he's quoted are bigger than the ones that are current.
But I, I think the, the thing is they're not anywhere near as big though, they're not anywhere near as big as what the Booster Club had envisioned. So just my question is, can we add on to these?
Yeah.
Sounds like they're coming with two parts.
Well, I think you just keep adding levels, correct?
Can buy additional sets of bleachers that'll be the same size.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, can you like just keep adding to it so it goes higher?
I don't think you'd go higher, no.
Okay.
But you can get them in different, it depends on what, how big you want it to go.
Well, that's.
The two of you. I'm not sure how many, how many rows they go up. I can get the link and send that out to the, send that out to the board.
Yeah. I mean, I suppose we can ask Josh, cause I mean, anytime I'm at a facility that has newer bleachers, it looks like just something that you can just keep going and make it as big as you want.
So today he told me that there were two options. I believe one was five rows, which still would be bigger than what we had. Um, and then I think he said that there was one that had ten rows, obviously more expensive, but that has to have a back and like, you know, handrails on it. So it's, it, it's more costly.
Are they portable? Because he buys two smaller ones. I love the idea of moving them from places to places.
That's what he's, that's what he's hoping for.
That's the intent, so that he can move them back to the, the softball and baseball fields when they're needed.
Awesome.
Sorry, his terrorist point, spoke to him as well. He said that the, the P T O is turning their attention inside of the bill because they don't want to look like they're just focusing on outdoor facilities. They want to, they want to make sure that all groups are represent, that they represent as a, as a booster club or, or be, or benefit from.
Then my other question is on the, uh, north side walkway. Where exactly, where exactly is that located?
The north side walkway is where you go into both.
Okay.
The concrete is completely disintegrating.
Yep. It's been like that for a while and unfortunately, fortunately, we haven't had an accident. I, I actually noticed it the last time I went to the boat. It's almost like a, a little sinkhole going on or, uh, type thing. So I, I'd say it's definitely a priority. So that, that would be just, what would they do? Tear up the old concrete and put down new concrete?
Yeah, they repair that whole time.
Well, I think for eighteen thousand dollars, it's more than just a small repair.
Yeah.
So do you know what the scope of that job is?
They'd be digging out the disintegrated sections and repairing.
Okay.
Are these bleachers A D A compliant Cory?
A D A compliant?
Don't we have to, uh, yeah. Wouldn't they have to be A D A compliant?
I wouldn't think anything sold by now, this is A D A compliant.
All right. I'm just checking, got to cross our Ts.
Yep.
Let me, I'll pull the link and I'll send that out to the, the board so you guys can see them.
Awesome.
Great. Anybody have anything else for Cory?
No. Can we get a copy of that report sent over to the Budget Committee?
Uh, if the Budget Committee wants to request it, yes.
Isn't, isn't that typically what we do? We send the B A report to the Budget Committee as a courtesy?
We send them the B A report, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
We don't have a B A report.
That was the B, Business Administrator Report.
Well, I think what we normally send them is the financial report, the monthly financial report. Thank you Cory.
Go on.
So we have the paraprofessional usage report? Is that just for us or?
Uh, yeah, so just, uh, the link works, right? So if you click on that, it'll launch a spreadsheet for the, uh, paraprofessional report. The board has been asking for a report of paraprofessionals and we broke it out into grade levels, uh, so that you can see how many paras there are assigned at each grade. Note that it's a little different at the high school because, um, the high school doesn't use grade structure in the same way that the elementary and middle school do. So just be aware, it gets a little bit different there. And, uh, then we decided to put this into three columns. So one is just showing program paras. So when we have a, a para in the kindergarten, that's what they're assigned to do, that's a program para. Um, and then it shows one-on-one paras, which are obviously driven by I E Ps when a student is, um, required to have a para assigned to assist them. And then there are shared paras where, you know, it can be a two-to-one, three-to-one ratio. Maybe a child has a para for a portion of the day and that same para then attracts another student for another portion of the day, et cetera. So we've just tried to, uh, present that so that you can see exactly what we have for paras, um, across the district. And there's some notes there that sort of describe that too, so.
I guess like I'm blown away by the amount of one-on-one paras. Absolutely blown away. You're telling me that there are nine paraprofessionals in the sixth grade? That's 10% of our population or more needs a paraprofessional to help?
Let me pull it up.
I'm not saying, paraprofessionals are awesome because I was one and I think all of our paras are awesome. I just think some of these numbers are crazy. Not the shared paras, but the one-on-one paras. I don't know about anyone else's school district. We probably, we have seven hundred students in my school and we might have ten at the most and we have a severe autism program.
Mike, does that include nurses? Like if the, if the student needs a one-on-one nurse assigned?
I don't believe that that's included. I'm not, I'm not certain of that, but I'd have to double check. So I think, so I don't have the report in front of me and if I switch off on the screen, then it goes, I lose this meeting, uh, broadcast. So, um, I apologize that I don't, I don't have it here.
So in the sixth grade, Mike, there are three shared paras. That's awesome. But there are six one-on-one paras. I, I just don't understand why we have so many one-on-one paras when we have so many kids going out of district as well.
Yeah, so.
What is going on with our population of special ed students? Now I'm getting concerned.
Well, so we should involve Devin in that conversation. Remember that, that's, that's I E P driven, right? And so, you know, it's very possible, depending on what the student needs are at that grade level, that that's the right, um, the right number. And it, it is going to fluctuate by grades because each grade has a unique set of students in it. But we should definitely involve, um, Devin in the dialogue about that, if that's a concern. And it probably, you know, it, it may be better that we do that in a non-public session because it will be very difficult to have that dialogue without getting into particulars of students that really are not for public consumption, so.
Absolutely.
So why don't we, why don't we invite Devin to a, a non-public to, um, to go into that a little bit more now that you have the summary? We'll schedule that, Michelle, for, um, what's the date, May twentieth? Is that the right date?
Nineteenth?
I just want to say, I'm not, this is nothing about paraprofessionals and the job they're doing. I just want to know how they're assigned, why they're assigned, what qualifies a one-on-one para, like just different things that don't, I don't understand that I've worked in six school districts and I've never seen things like this, that maybe I'm missing the bigger picture. And I think Devin would help understand.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, we'll schedule that into non-public, um, and maybe we can do that before the board meeting so that it's not a late night discussion. Yes.
So there are sixty-three in total. Are they all part-time or are they, some of them full-time? They're all, they're all part-time?
We don't have any full-time paras.
So, thank you. So you're, you're welcome. Um, and it was, it was helpful to pull together and have our administrators kind of notate a little bit about that. So you have it now and we'll continue that dialogue. We may want Principal Lecliter in there also, if, if that grade level in particular, um, jumps out.
Or I didn't get all three principals.
Yeah.
Just for the non-public.
No, if we're, I just want to know if we're missing something that we have to have this many paras. Is there, I don't know, I guess they could talk about it.
Yeah, let's, let's involve the principals because they may have some ideas too.
So before you go on to new business, I was just thinking, Tina, before when you were asking as far as that B A report, what I'd like to do, because I don't have a problem once we finalize the sharing with the Budget Committee, but it's no sense in giving it to them like piecemeal? And Cory says he's going to give us a spreadsheet next week with more financials on it. I think at that point, and then if we add any things to it.
My next meeting is the twenty-eighth.
Right, that's what I was thinking too, but there's no sense, right.
You know, if then they have time to go through it and ask questions so that I'm not caught off.
Yeah. And there's not, right, and there's no sense in sending it piecemeal to them. I mean, it's, it'll still probably be piecemealed, but once it's in a spreadsheet form, I think it'll be easier. Plus you'll have more numbers that'll be more accurate. But then even after that, we're going to add to it. So then we can explore it to a mapwards. All right. So that brings us to new business, budget schedule.
Um, so just a quick update, but, um, Brian, Tina, Cory and I had a conversation last night with, um, Andrew and Nikki from the Budget Committee, just talking about the budget season coming up. I mean, it, it'll be here before we know it. And so we, uh, we just engaged in maybe some different ways to come at, um, the budgeting so that we can be a little bit more efficient. It felt like last year we were duplicating a lot of things. So the board presentations, understanding, developing the budget to then go to the Budget Committee and go through it all over again. And so we're trying to find ways to work together and I, personally, I felt it was a very productive conversation. I think, um, the parties were really open to trying to find ways to make sure that Budget Committee members engage with the school budget and we can hopefully come up with an efficient way to get there. So, um, it may look a little different. I just want to say that for the board. We've talked about maybe not doing the all-day Saturday thing, having some joint meetings so that we can see, um, the pieces all come together. And then Cory's going to do some back planning off of that, um, so that we can be a little bit more focused with the board in October in terms of almost like budget workshop models so that we're still getting information to the board, letting the board understand and dialogue around the budget, um, so that when we get into the actual approval stages that you're not hearing something for the first time. So I think if we strategically use our October meetings and my, my other, uh, kind of big concept was maybe going a little bit later so that when we're actually putting numbers on the page in front of you, they're the real numbers. It's not, well, we're just, this is a placeholder on insurance, so, you know, it could change by a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's, that, that's feeling like maybe we shouldn't be placeholding it yet. You know, we should be a little bit more, okay, the number's going to come out in early November, so that's the stage where we start to, um, work with the real numbers and not placeholder numbers. So, um, that's what we talked about last night. I don't know if anybody else has something to add from that dialogue.
It seemed so redundant last year and taking up our principals' time night after night. It's anything to streamline the process. Us having a school board meeting on Wednesday until nine or 10, you guys having a Budget Committee the next night till nine or 10 and that, I, anything to, I'm all bored for streamlining anything in that process.
That was the direction of the.
The chair is also, has also said he's committed to keeping us to a nine-thirty end time, um, and starting meetings earlier when we can.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so here, I mean, he's, he's all for getting all, all of the information and making sure that the Budget Committee members are, you know, have a, a full understanding and we're not answering the same questions over and over again and, and that it, it goes a lot more than we do. So I, I was encouraged by last night's conversation. And like, we won't, you know, we won't have the software issues that we had last year with the budgeting software. We won't have, you know, we could have the numbers firm aside from things like insurance that just takes longer, um, on a more timely basis, I hope. So I think.
I mean, that was, that was a general consensus between, you know, both groups that we're looking to eliminate redundancy and we're also looking to cut the time down. I mean, everyone's schedule is busy. I mean, we all work, uh, most of y'all work full-time jobs and, and, you know, just going to meetings, especially that many meetings during the, the holiday season, it's tough. And we just think there are ways we can streamline it where we're not putting as many meetings in and not as much time, but getting them even more involved as far as, you know, to minimize how many meetings and just make it a little bit smoother transition.
Clearly there was a need for a change because it was striking when I think, Mike, you added up the hours and you just said we, you actually spent more time in front of the Budget Committee than you even, than, than you did in front of our, us. And then, I mean, it was many hours in front of us. So it just, yeah, it's just too much and we have to streamline it. So I'm glad to hear that that's moving forward.
Yeah. I'm excited about this year, this coming year. I've never said, ever said I'm being excited about the budget. I'm optimistic.
You're not there yet.
No, I know, I know. I'll change my tune in October, I'm sure.
Hopefully for the better. And I, I think, Tina, I think you felt the same way after last night, that, I mean, we're definitely, what we bounced around, if it works, i- is going to be so much easier for all involved, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So that brings us to old business.
So, uh, just, just quickly under our, this is our COVID nineteen update. So we've talked about grading. I think we don't need to spend any more time, uh, on that topic, but obviously.
Actually, I did have a question about that. I know we've talked at the elementary level and then also at the high school level, but I haven't really heard about grading or middle school. Not that it needs to change, but I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, so the, the, the early conversation, um, is that the middle school is interested in staying with the, uh, the letter grades. So not shifting to some different type of grading. Um, and then the question is the no harm grading. So what, what do we do in order to make sure that, um, that our students are being graded accurately, um, throughout? So that's where they are right now, Tyra, but I think, you know, we're going to continue the dialogue, um, going forward, so.
Okay. And then actually, I know I read in Mr. Thompson's report about the direction that they're headed, but I, I don't think we've talked about that tonight. So I feel like that would be a very good thing to talk about tonight.
I'm turning, I want to ask about that.
So, uh, where the elementary school is, so keep in mind that they already have two systems, right? They have the primary system in, in K one, two. And then there is a, which is sort of a, a rubric-based, um, grading. So there's, uh, you know, descriptors that are given on how a child is progressing. And then in grades three and four, it is a, um, a letter grade that is awarded. So, um, they are looking at, if, there's an ability in the system to switch over to more of a narrative descriptor grade at GMS and we're trying to figure out how to make all that mesh. So that's, um, that's the conversation that they're having. I, I thought Scott had that in his report, but it may not be there.
He did, he did, but we just haven't talked, talked about it. So people may not go through and read, you know, the hundred, hundreds of pages in the, in the reference materials. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And I, I like that direction personally. It makes a lot of sense.
And it doesn't require a, um, so we're also very sensitive to our, um, our tech people, right? So Andrea, who has to make sure the backend of the system can make. So Andrea, who has to make sure the backend of the system can make all this work. We've involved Andrea in all the conversations. And, you know, occasionally a really good idea, she just looks at us and says, can't do it. I mean, it's, you're, it's almost like you have to close it out and design something brand new to implement that. And we don't have that capacity to do. Remember that she is very efficiently and effectively dialing up Power School at the same time, right? So we signed contracts for Power School before we knew that schools were going to be shut down. So we have a new student information system that we are building and programming to make sure that it's ready to meet our needs in the fall. So we, we can't overload the system by designing something unique to do for one, you know, one quarter. So we just have to keep all those moving parts in mind as we work our way through it.
Well, that's great. She's found that potential flexibility to change over to that.
My, my next thing is on the fall school reopening plans. So I shared with you a plan that, that the Goffstown School District has floated out. So Superintendent Balky over in Goffstown in New Boston has shared his thought of what it would take in order to successfully and safely reopen schools. And I'm sharing that with the board. If you need to read, digest, he, as always, is two steps ahead of me. I haven't given great, I'm trying to figure out how to close out this year. But we do have to start to shift toward thinking about reopening and what will that look like to be able to do it safely. And so, you know, I'm, I'm a big believer in if somebody else has a great idea, let's borrow from it. And so there's some parameters that are put out. Our nurses have been participating in international calls and are learning from nurses in Europe what they have done because they are also ahead of us in terms of where the viral shutdown has occurred. And then they're starting to reopen schools in Denmark. And so they're participating in those calls, learning from their colleagues worldwide. And so those ideas are also starting to come together. So we have a plan that Nurse Seabrook, actually, I think it was all three nurses that, that worked on this. But she has brought that forward. The admin team's going to be meeting on that in the morning so we can start to come, come together with our plan. So you can see the keys to this are really the safety factors in terms of where we were testing. Can we identify, you know, who is exposed, who is at risk? And then make smart and quick and efficient decisions about people being in the same space. So I will tell the board that I've also, in all my conversations with staff, have said, we're going to have to think outside of the box. You know, the nineteen-seventy split sessions because we didn't have enough classroom spaces for everybody to go to school together, so we had to divide up. That's what we may have to default back to. And I don't exactly know what that's going to look like, to be honest. And, you know, do we have half the students in the morning, feed them lunch, send them home while other students are arriving and are getting fed lunch? And then having a school day into the early evening? Maybe that's part of our discussion. Maybe that's part of how we get this thing designed and pulled off for the fall, so.
I was told that we need to have a plan to the governor by August first, so we still have some time.
Well, that's news to me, so.
Sorry, we have a staff meeting today. Sorry.
Yeah, so, you know, getting those pieces pulled together. It's interesting, we have to have a plan pulled together when they haven't even given us the framework for it, but that's okay.
Well, welcome to the government.
But I want to start having the dialogue now. I mean, honestly, our next meeting is late May, right? So, I mean, we, we have to start to gel around some of this. And it's going to have to be fluid in order to try to figure it out, so.
Oh my, I can't.
So do you want feedback on the actual document itself?
Do you, do you have some or are you?
Yeah, too much too soon.
I know. I, yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot, a lot to absorb. Has he, so this is something he's floated out. It hasn't been approved yet on his end, run by his board or anything yet?
So he has shared that with his board. I don't, I don't honestly know if they voted to accept it or not. I'm not sure where the vote is on that. But it's the, the talking points that he has relative to what it will look like. And, and I will just share with the board that we are in the process of implementing tighter constraints over staff members that are coming into school. We've been telling staff, if you're not feeling well, don't come in. If you've been in a high-risk area, don't come in. If somebody in your house is sick, don't come in. So we've been really clear about that, but we're going to put in place some protocols for people when they do come in. So for example, today I arrived, you know, here in the back of my head, I know what I'm supposed to do. But I came in, I walked into my office and kind of got down to business. And we're going to tighten that up a little bit. So in the future, I would come in and have to complete a form where I'm sort of verifying I don't have a fever. And we might have one of those no-contact thermometers that you see on the news, you know, the people in the subways in Italy that are just measuring people's temperatures as they walk by. Okay, my temperature today is normal. I feel fine. I haven't been in contact with anybody, you know, et cetera. So it makes it a little bit more front of mind. It goes from what I know I should do in the back of my mind to, okay, I have to fill a form out and check off that I'm feeling okay. And we think it's important because inevitably some staff member is going to be, come down with COVID-19. And when that occurs, we want to be able to say, yep, we took all the precautions we could along the way. So we're already starting to put procedures in place.
So I'm, I'm pretty sure that when you're taking temperature checks, those have to be taken in private. Or at least they've been, people have to be told in private because of HIPAA. So one note I had about this was that it'd be nice to hear from our, our school nurses about, you know, how some of this would be executed.
In my school tower, you have to walk in, it's antibacterial soap. You have a pen, you have to wash it off with an antibacterial wipe. You have to verify you don't have any of the symptoms and you have to take your temperature. And I'm fine with that. And now we have to wear masks in the building at all times. We're staggering days to clean out our classrooms.
So you're taking your own temperature and then are you doing it, you're not doing it in a private area? You're just doing it.
It's true, that's to be, I'm, I'm not very private, I think.
Some people are. Right.
So, you know, and, and actually, so Hudson has a similar procedure. So again, we've reached out, it's like Hudson has something in place. We're trying to mesh all that together to come up with some protocol. I mean, we're, we're, we're lucky because right now it's only the high school that's opened and SAU staff members are in, you know, roughly a day a week. A few people are going in a little bit more, maybe two mornings to get stuff accomplished. But our custodians come in every day and get down to work. And so, you know, again, just taking time to complete a checklist on paper or a Google Form checklist so that we know, you know, it's, it's different when you put it in front of somebody and they have to check the box verifying that they're feeling okay, so.
So one thing that jumped out at me was the statement that you have to have a vaccine has, has to be available. And I would think that a vaccine or a therapy would have to be available. They're even just talking today about cloning antibody, antibodies. And so I feel like that one or the other of those could be available.
But some people often have the vaccine. There are people who don't have the flu vaccine or the MMR vaccine. We can't make people vaccinate.
I mean, or, or a therapy, that's why I'm saying, to make it more broad qualifications are. I think it's a good starting point for discussion. Have some time to figure out. I mean, the most important thing is what are we, what's our capacity? And, you know, for distancing and, and, you know, we don't even know for another week and a half, you know, when we're going to be able to have groups more than ten. So I think it's premature at this point to, to nail that down.
Yeah, and, and honestly, Tara, when I saw the.
But I appreciate you bringing it to the board. I mean, that's, you know, that's what you needed to do and that's good. And important to get the discussion going, especially if, uh, beginning of August is our deadline.
Well, when I saw the vaccine piece, I immediately thought, my goodness, that might not be available. It might not even be available till January and then large scale. Is he, you know, is he essentially saying we're not just going to be in session next year? I mean, so that's a, that's a piece that, yeah. So I think you make a really good point as to what that means. And that may not be, that may not be the guidance that we get going forward, but that's out there. That's, that's something that we're, I think we're all looking to see what happens with the vaccine.
And just because it's available doesn't mean it's produced. And it also doesn't mean that people are actually going to get it.
Correct, all of those. So we're talking.
Well, thanks for bringing it forward.
We'll stay at it. Another quick thing is CARES Act money. So we hear oftentimes about CARES Act money being available. And so that is, just so the board knows, we saw last week for the first time, we were told it was going to be eighty-five percent of title funding. A sheet of paper came out and it said Litchfield was scheduled to get seventy-six thousand and change in terms of CARES Act money. So that's additional funding in order to help offset costs that we incur relative to the COVID-19 shutdown. However, there are no rules written on that yet. The money is not even in the state of New Hampshire yet. And so the rules on how to spend it haven't been drafted. So at this point, we know that this money is coming. The deadline to expend the funds is marked for September of 2022, which tells me, what they're saying is that when the money comes, you will be able to back-plan expenses to March thirteenth of, of 2020. But just understand, you know, because we're getting asked questions, you know, how are you allocating the money yet? Well, we haven't because there are no rules around which we can even get stuff approved. So it's, 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 I guess, I don't want to call it theoretical money. It's real money, but how we can spend it is very theoretical at this point. So until we get that governance, we're not doing anything with it. So just to be clear with the board, that's where we are. Cory, you may have an update. You were in the commissioner's call today, so.
There was nothing on the commissioner's call, but right as we started the meeting tonight, the email came from Caitlin Davis scheduling a call for Monday, the eleventh regarding the CARE, CARE Act money. So there might be some information that comes out of that. Went to BA's and superintendents that committed to, uh, as well. If they would most involved the grant, they would have some interest in that as well. So maybe something will come out of that call, so I'm going to attend.
Excellent. So there you have the up-to-date where we are with CARES Act money, just so that we're, we're aware. And we're looking at, you know, seventy-six thousand is not a lot in the grand scheme of the expenses that we've incurred. So we're trying to figure out to strategically utilize that funding, so. But again, even ideas we put on the board may not be allowed in the rules when they finally get set, so. Remember the fame, again, it's, it's federal money. So it gets painted as, oh, it's money, you can do what you need to. And then you get this laundry list of stipulations that go with it that in the end might make things kind of difficult for us. So just keep that in mind. And we also had food services, but Cory, do you have any update on food service for the board? You, you work with Lauren more closely daily than I do.
She reported to me today that she is, the, the number of free reduced applications that are going out, there's nothing that people are taking advantage of that. Any meals that get served after Part Seventeen, that's what the date was, we are going to see reimbursed at the, at the free rate, which is higher than. So we're not charging, we're not charging for any meals served, but we're, we're receiving more than that for each meal served as they go out reimbursed. She continues to have consistently about probably ninety to a hundred people, her pickup families. They're going pretty well on that end smoothly. They've got a pretty good operation going on at the high school.
And just a couple of things, there was a communication from a family just asking about food sanitation. So our staff are wearing masks, gloves, et cetera, when they're preparing the meals. And so I just want to say that publicly that, you know, not only are all the staff members trained in all proper sanitation, we're taking extraordinary measures right now to make sure that the staff coming in to prepare those meals are protecting the, the families. And we've had conversation, just, I'll put it on the radar, that Memorial Day is on Monday. So we've been serving meals on Monday and Wednesday. Obviously, there'll be a disruption because of Memorial Day, Monday. But we will have a very clear plan communicated to families, you know, an insert into the bags that people pick up so that they're reminded of how we're going to work around. We have a couple of ideas, we haven't settled on which one, but we'll make sure that that's clearly communicated. So again, if you've been relying on it, families, pay attention to the communication around Memorial Day because that'll be forthcoming. So that's what we have for our update on coronavirus.
Oh, I have a question or a comment. So when teachers are cleaning out their rooms, are they going to have to like completely take everything out of the room? Like if we have to go back with huge spaces between desks, are we going to have to have teachers remove items or script their classes down? I don't think it's the janitor's jobs to do that. Do you know what I'm saying? Like say I had a, a turtle display or something right here. That's not the janitor's job, but that doesn't need to be in there. You know what I'm saying? Like get rid of extraneous stuff in the classroom?
So I, I think we're going to have to have that conversation. Again, what's the guidance going to show us? And, and if there are things that we know could potentially be, I mean, the last thing we want is sterile classrooms where.
Oh, I want to get that, yeah. I'm going to talk bulletin board, but there must be other stuff.
But I, but I think finding a way to make sure that, you know, surfaces that can transmit the virus, that we're sensitive to that. So, yep, it's a great question. I will tell you that the, the cleaning out of rooms, the teachers have been phenomenal coming in and getting that done. And so that is, that has worked really well. The custodians have been able to get ahead of projects. And so again, they're, they're already getting floors stripped and, and classes put back. So many good things are coming of the fact that school's not in session. So we're working ahead on all that. But you're right.
They could eat here for the janitors and they don't, they don't want the liability of touching people's things and stuff like that either.
Right.
True.
And just a reminder that manifests are, if you have not stopped at CHS to sign a manifest, they are available on the counter. So if you can please get through CHS hopefully tomorrow and sign off on a manifest. And as always, if you have any questions on the manifest, we can always bring it forward to our next meeting.
I signed it today.
Excellent.
Okay, but I was the only one that had signed it at that point.
Yep. All right. Thank you. All right, that'll bring us to public input again.
I have an email from Ryan Keller. He says he's watching the board meeting and wondered about, we have people coming into the schools and they're asymptomatic, check all the boxes, but still may spread it. Where's the liability at that point?
Or mandatory?
As we look at different situations, we'll be better on that. And that's it.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yep.
We will now go into non-public.
Actually, Brian, can I just say one thing?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to recognize that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week and to thank the teachers for all of their hard work and effort in reinventing, reinventing learning in this new arena. So I know it's a, it's a totally, it's not what they signed up for. And, you know, it's been a big change for everybody and, you know, they just get, get a lot of credit for making it happen and. for making it happen, and, you know, making the best of it, so thank you.
Absolutely. All right, again, we're now going to non-public. I should know the RSA by heart.
Do you need a motion to go to non-public, Brian?
Pardon me?
I'm having a hard time hearing you, do you need a motion to go to non-public?
Here, right here, yes, I don't need to read it, okay. He was looking through the RSA, yeah. So RSA 91-8 colon 311, "The dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or discrediting of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him, unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting, and two, the request of the meeting be opened, in which case the request shall be granted. The hiring of any person as a public employee, matters which are discussed in public, will likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body of the agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting."
Yes.
Yes.
Tina, yes. Tara, yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Rob?
Yep.
Liz?
Yes.
And Brian, yes, we're now in non-public.
Bye Chloe, bye Tara.
Bye Trevor, bye Chloe.